Good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate y'all coming to today's hearing to discuss the current status of our peer-to-peer legislation in the city of Columbus. Many of you recall the conversation took place months ago when we enacted the legislation that we would have a touch base hearing just to see how things stood, where the market trends were going, as well as what other jurisdictions, cities, and states across the United States are doing with peer-to-peer. Of course, wanted to see and touch base with our friends in taxi as well to find out what's going on with them. This is all part of a global conversation, an ongoing conversation, and the pledge that we made together to continuously talk about the status of transportation as it relates to taxi and peer-to-peer. So that's the purpose of this hearing. Appreciate everyone coming. Out of respect to certain folks, the order of the presentation was intentionally done to respect religious issues that came about, and certainly want to respect that, and that's why Morgan Kaufman is going to be the first speaker, and we're kind of letting him go first because he has a previous obligation from his faith to attend to. So at this time, I don't see, I see City Attorney Pfeiffer, I'm sorry, City Attorney Pfeiffer was here. Do you want to make any comments, City Attorney? All right. Morgan Kaufman, the floor is yours. Morgan, I know I introduced you. If you just could restate your name and the entity, organization that you're with, and give you an opportunity to present kind of the way you see things to council, but thank you for your cooperation and the work that Yellow Cab has done with me and with council. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Morgan Kaufman, and I represent Columbus Yellow Cab. Thank you, Councilperson Klein, for making vehicle-for-hire issues a priority in Columbus and welcoming all of us to provide that update. Once again, my name is Morgan Kaufman. I represent Columbus Yellow Cab and over 85 years' experience operating in Columbus. Even with this experience, Columbus Yellow Cab has learned a lot in the last year since Uber and Lyft has operated as a TNC or transportation network company. Lyft exited Columbus in February stating the regulations were too stringent. Number one, the TNCs are trying to attract the same drivers and the same passengers as the taxi and livery companies. Uber's $50 billion valuation and deep-pocketed ad campaigns on the radio, the internet, and even giving away free rides almost to all the new users has made it increasingly more difficult to attract both drivers and passengers in the taxi and livery world. Number two, the TNCs are potentially overcrowding the streets of downtown and the short north, having issued over 1,500 licenses in just over a year compared to the capped 530 taxi licenses, including 30 paratransit taxi licenses for those with disabilities. And number three, the TNCs have the ability to change their fares multiple times per day, both up and down, to meet demand. Taxis must pay $35, take the vehicle off the street to waits and measures on only Tuesdays and Thursdays each time a change is requested. Taxi's current regulations do not have the fluidity to match fares to supply and demand in real time with this traditional requirement. Please know, we are committed and welcome competition while building the best and safest taxi and livery company in Columbus. However, we need an even playing field to compete with this juggernaut. Though a lot of the traditional thinking has been challenged, we are all really doing the same thing using an app: push a button, get a car. To the driver and passenger, no money needs to change hands, and a virtual handshake has taken place to identify both parties in the transaction. Please allow taxi and livery the same tools to continue to compete in this marketplace: soft meters, creative insurance options, and a cap for the total vehicle-for-hires on the street to be divided between taxi, livery, and the TNCs. With public safety in mind, we all went to pick people up and drop them off in any way the market pleases. Allow us a chance to do so with the knowledge and experience we have lived since 1928 in Columbus. Please, at this time, I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Just so I understand, you raised a couple of different issues that you would like to see us explore as it relates to taxi, as you see the world. The first was, you say, was smart or soft meters?
Soft meters.
Self or soft?
S-O-F-T.
Soft meter.
Soft meters.
Gotcha. And what are those? What are soft meters?
A soft meter is, instead of using speed sensors, which is typical in the taxi world, for time and distance to accrue a fare, it's just using GPS instead.
Okay. And that technology exists, and do other cities use that?
They do.
Uh-huh.
And it exists, and it's currently being used here in Columbus.
Okay. It's currently being used?
Yeah, Uber uses the same technology.
Oh, I see what you're, okay, I thought, but not taxi?
Well, not taxi, correct.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying. Got it. Okay, and then the second was, it was a limitation on the amount of licenses to be split amongst all sort of, I don't want to say livery, because that's a whole subject, but other transportation options?
Yes. If we were able to do a third-party study of the city of Columbus, of where we are now and where we need to be maybe the next three to five years, and figure out how many cars need to be on the street to service that population, and then divide that, whether it's even or not even, that's really up to the city, but divide that number between taxi, livery, and TNCs.
And then, what was the third? You mentioned a third thing.
Creative insurance options.
Creative insurance options. And what do you think, what would that look like, Mr. Kaufman?
Well, the marketplace is changing very quickly, and with the juggernaut of Uber being so public, it has really gotten the attention nationally and internationally of different insurance groups that are now racing to the table with different ideas of how to insure that type of liability. It's something we'd like to explore more, because if their insurance expenses are less expensive than our traditional expenses, it makes it much more difficult for us to compete in that marketplace with a heavier overhead.
And so on the soft meters, are you aware of any city in the country that is permitting taxi to use soft meters?
Here in Columbus, we are using soft meters in our livery vehicles.
In your livery vehicles, but not in taxi?
Correct.
Okay. And are you aware of any city using that for taxi?
I'm sure it exists. Just give me a little time.
Sure, yeah, that's fine, just curious. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it, and certainly want to work together with you and other folks from the industry that are representing here tonight to figure out how we can continue to make all options competitive in least burdensome way to accomplish that goal for all entities involved. So appreciate you coming down, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Klein. If it's okay with you, may I ask a question that maybe we could get to the bottom of, and answer even as quickly as today?
Perhaps.
There's some mystery in the vehicle-for-hire world of sales tax and Uber, and what's happening in Columbus right now. So if you wouldn't mind posing that question so we could have some more clarity, that would be wonderful.
Sure. I'll pose the question to anyone that wants to answer it. I don't know the answer to it. Sales tax generally is a county issue, not city issue, so I don't know the answer, but if the city attorney wants to opine, or if the folks from the peer-to-peer, or anyone else that wants to get up and speak wants to do so, that's fair game to talk about.
That'd be terrific. On a taxi receipt, the sales tax is line itemed, and on an Uber receipt, it's not. So that's where the mystery is, so just for some clarity. Thank you.
Sure. So sales tax, got it. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. The next speaker is Ms. Patz, Ramona Patz, from the licensing section. And by the way, before you start, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if you have any, if you want to fill out a speaker slip, you can do so right here, drop it in the box, or drop it off up front to Gretchen or Gina. We'll take speakers at the end. The next person, Ms. Patz, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Klein. The Department of Public Safety devoted many hours to create the new Peer-to-Peer Transportation Network Company license and driver's license city codes. Our focus and concern has always been on the public safety and that the industry would be properly and fairly regulated. During the many hours of discussion, we focused on three main areas that we wanted to ensure that we could properly protect the public. The first is fingerprinting for background checks. We also wanted to make sure they align with our background standards. We feel that fingerprinting is the most reliable part of identification or type of identification. The background standards, we look back seven years when it comes to convictions, when it comes to DUI, manslaughter, homicide, felony in which violence is used, sex offenses, trafficking in controlled substances, offensive violences, weapon violations, and fail to stop after an accident. The second one is certified mechanical inspections. We wanted to ensure that we were keeping our riding public safe. We are requiring that they get an independent mechanical inspection by a certified ASC mechanic. The second, the third one is insurance requirements. We worked long and hard. We used a third party to vet the whole process. The company was called DemoTech to ensure that we had, we felt was enough insurance to cover if the vehicles were involved in an accident, if the network transportation company was actually have the application on at the time, the driver did. So we looked at not less than $1 million bodily injury, underinsured and uninsured. We also made sure that the driver had coverage, because DemoTech felt that there was a gap in that coverage. So we want to reiterate that there's three main concerns that public safety has at this time. First is fingerprinting for background checks. We feel that's the most reliable type of identification. Second, a certified mechanical inspection. We feel that an ASA mechanic can make sure the vehicle is safe to be roten, and the insurance requirements would stay within the limits that we have outlined in city code. So as for Department of Public Safety's stance, we feel these three main concerns are our issue when it comes to this peer-to-peer code.
Thank you, Ms. Patz. How many licenses have been issued to date?
I'm getting to that next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. The second part of the presentation, you asked for some day-to-day operations and numbers. At this time, we have 2,523 licensed peer-to-peer transportation network drivers. The peer-to-peer drivers fall under the Vehicle-for-Hire Rules and Regulations, there are 17 pages of them, and they are posted on the City of Columbus License Section website. As of September 15th, we have issued seven citations to peer-to-peer drivers, 10 issued for unlicensed drivers, four issued for fare-to-display discount or ID card, three issued for soliciting rides, which is hailing, and three issued for waiting in a taxi cab stand in no-stopping zone. We have not had any citizens' complaints against Uber at this time, but we've had some issues that the officers and patrol have noticed. They have noticed peer-to-peer drivers accepting hail from the side of the road, unclean, unsafe vehicles, again, these are complaints from patrol officers, unlicensed drivers working within the city of Columbus, licensed drivers using unregistered vehicles. Per Uberpeople.net and ABC Six reports, drivers were accepting cash for rides, and peer-to-peer drivers were stopping in taxi cab no-stopping zones. We also solicit complaints from current vehicle-for-hire drivers, and their complaints are, again, accepting street hails, stopping in taxi zones, unlicensed drivers working in the city of Columbus, and age of the difference for allowed vehicles. We have had several encounters of nonlicensed Uber drivers these past weekends at the high state game. As for the last question you had was about background check denials, we've had nine denials because of OMVI convictions, two multiple drug offenses, one weapons, two physical controls of a motor vehicle, one aggravated assault, one soliciting, and one vehicular manslaughter.
That last part was folks that applied to be drivers to the city of Columbus, and the city of Columbus denied?
Yes.
What's the total number there? I'm sorry.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay.
I think that's all the information that you had requested.
What's the penalty in some of, in the citations?
Most of them are minor misdemeanors or misdemeanors of the fourth degree.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate the diligence and the information. Our next speaker is from the City Attorney's Office, Chief Counsel to Richard C. Pfeiffer, Mr. Joshua Cox.
Thank you, Chairman Klein. I've been asked to address the state legislation, which is addressing what the state is calling "transportation network companies." House Bill 237 was introduced June 1st of this year. It passed the House June 25th. Obviously, nothing happened while they were on their summer break, but it has, as of last week, it was assigned to the State and Local Government Committee and the Senate. So the fact that it passed so quickly in the House leads me to think that it's headed towards passage by the General Assembly. So it's something that will impact the city's regulatory scheme here, and I'll just, I want to read one division of what is proposed, new Section 492509. It's just three sentences, so bear with me, because I think it explains what the General Assembly is thinking in terms of their legislation. It reads, "The regulation of transportation network companies, transportation network company drivers, and transportation network company services is a matter of general statewide interest that requires statewide regulation." Chapter 4925 and Sections 33, sorry, 393801 to 323804 of the Revised Code constitute a comprehensive plan with respect to all aspects of the regulation of transportation network companies, transportation network drivers, and transportation network services. Accordingly, it is the intent of the General Assembly to preempt any local ordinance, resolution, or other law adopted to license, register, tax, or otherwise regulate transportation network companies, transportation network company drivers, or transportation network company services." So the General Assembly, you know, the fact that they say that's their intent doesn't necessarily make it so. It's governed by state constitution, and as that's been interpreted by the Supreme Court. So it really comes down to a couple of issues. When the city regulates these companies, it's an exercise of police power. So when you're exercising police power, the question is, does the, if the statute takes precedence over the local ordinance, first question is, is it in conflict with the local ordinance? And based on this language, our regulation would be in conflict. So the more important question here would be, is it a general law of the state? And there's a four-part test that I won't go into to determine what a general law of the state is, but in this circumstance, it would probably come down to the issue of whether it is a comprehensive statewide regulation of this service, of these services. And this House bill does address topically the same issues essentially that the city's chapter does address, and there are also some provision, there is a provision, and therefore, the PUCO, which would be the licensing entity to adopt additional rules that would fill in some of those issues that are not addressed in the legislation.
So does the fact that it's comprehensive in the four-part test weigh in favor of the city's jurisdiction, or weigh in favor of the state being able to regulate it?
It weighs in favor of the state's statute taking precedence over the...
So the more comprehensive it is, then the more likely, based on court precedent, a court would find that the state regulation would preempt, or we would be preempted as a city to enact additional legislation, and it would be in conflict?
Right. It's technically not preemption as in federal preemption, but it's a conflict test, and the state statute, we cannot enact something that would conflict with the state statute under those circumstances if it's a general law.
Okay. And the comprehensiveness element, which is the one that you seem to hang your hat on, weighs in favor of the general law interpretation?
Yes. And just as an example, for instance, with the photo red light enforcement cameras, the state passed a statute which essentially prohibited cities from using that system. There is no real regulation there, so that's one of the legal arguments in that case, that it's not a comprehensive statewide regulation. Here, they're addressing broader, typical regulatory issues in this legislation.
Okay. Well, thank you for weighing in on that. Just because the question was posed, do you have an opinion one way or the other on the sales tax issue?
I do not know the answer to that question. Like you said, the city does not collect sales tax, so I don't know.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, Mr. Cox?
Not for me.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Carla Jacobs from Uber. I know James Andre from Uber is here too, so I don't know if you both want to come up, or one of y'all want to come up, or, okay. Ms. Jacobs, welcome to council.
My name is Carla Jacobs. I'm on Uber's public policy team. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about updates to the city's ride-sharing ordinance. I'd like to share information about Uber's impact in Columbus to date, and talk about how ride-sharing has been regulated in other jurisdictions since the Columbus ordinance was enacted. As you know, Uber Technologies is a tech company that utilizes an online platform through which riders can connect with drivers who use their personal vehicles to provide safe rides across town. Our products are available in over 60 countries across the world, and we're currently providing service to over 70% of the U.S. population in 200 cities. Since we launched in Columbus two years ago, we've built our Ohio and Kentucky hub here in the city. We've invested in office space and hired talent from across the country. We've also partnered with thousands of drivers to provide an opportunity for them to make extra money on their own schedule. These drivers have provided hundreds of thousands of rides to passengers looking to get from point A to point B safely and affordably. However, these numbers can be higher, and they are higher in cities that have embraced smart regulations for ride-sharing. Over the past 18 months, almost 70 U.S. jurisdictions have put in place formal frameworks for ride-sharing. These frameworks reflect a desire by cities and states to support innovation and promote economic development and job growth through policies that create high standards for safety while reducing bureaucracy for part-time drivers. Unfortunately, the Columbus ordinance remains an outlier. Unlike regulations enacted more recently that have had the benefit of comparing different models such as Indiana, Illinois, Wisconsin, and Cincinnati, the Columbus ordinance places the burden of regulation on individual drivers, creating duplicative processes that are not improving safety but are preventing over 1,000 Columbus drivers from partnering with Uber. This is one of the largest backlogs in the nation.
Excuse me, what are the duplicative measures?
Sure. So the permitting process by the city, many of those processes are duplicative of the policies that Uber requires. For example, the background check, going into a city office when that information is already required by Uber to be submitted online.
So what you're saying is that we require certain things to be done, and you require certain things to be done, and of the same things?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I want to emphasize that in all the jurisdictions where we operate, safety is our number-one priority. First, before any driver partner is allowed onto the platform, they must pass a rigorous background check that includes county, multi-state, and national-level checks. From there, through our technology, we're able to provide safety features that aren't available through more traditional transportation options, such as the ShareMyETA feature and the emailed receipt with map, timestamps, and fare breakdown. The problematic provisions in the Columbus ordinance do not improve safety for the ride-sharing industry beyond what other cities have developed. Instead, they focus on unnecessary and duplicative processes for drivers who are looking to partner with Uber. We conducted a survey of drivers, and they indicated that they were confused by the city's multistep process, they could not afford the city's fee prior to the earnings they would have from driving, and they could not comply with the city's office hours, which are typically 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. Many of the drivers were also unable to complete this process for a variety of other reasons. This means that over 1,000 drivers who want to partner with Uber are missing out on this opportunity. Similarly, it means that riders are sometimes unable to find a driver for a safe ride home as they can in other cities, sometimes late at night when drinking and driving incidents are most likely to happen. There's an opportunity to reverse this trend. Columbus was one of the first cities to pass a ride-sharing ordinance, and since that time, consensus has developed about how to regulate this new industry. With smarter, smoother regulations, as we've seen in neighboring cities, we'll have the opportunity to focus on providing more residents the opportunity to supplement their income and reducing more DUIs on late nights and weekends. I'm happy to take any other questions.
Are you able to share how many folks have signed up for Uber but have not gone through the city's regulation side?
Sure. It's over 1,000 drivers, and it's growing.
Over 1,000? So that's 1,000 people that you're saying that have signed up through Uber, done certain steps? Has that completed the Uber process, or just somehow made initiation to the...
Yep, completed the Uber process, but have not completed the city's process.
Okay. And does Uber have a response of what Ms. Patz said about the citations specifically as it relates to folks driving on the platform but not licensed by the city?
Yeah, so we were alerted to those citations, and we're currently looking into it, and our team will report back to you and the director on what we found.
Because you can understand the concern there, you want to make sure we have a good partnership, but if y'all are letting people drive on the system...
Absolutely. We're looking into it right now.
Okay. All right. And then, on the background check, do you have any information, because it seems to be that, from what I've read in the newspaper, not only in the Columbus Dispatch and their analysis of the background check, fingerprint versus maybe what you do, although the Dispatch series had nothing to do with Uber as much as just the fingerprint itself, and took the task whether it was actually effective or not. Do you have any information on how many folks that Columbus has allowed but Uber has denied because of your background check? Because I always find this to be the fascinating part of the analysis, is that the folks that are pro-fingerprint say, well, we're denying this many people because they failed our fingerprint, but Uber allowed them, and then Uber turns around and says, well, we're denying this many people because they got through your background check and they're actually felons.
Yeah.
So do you have any information on that?
Yeah, I don't have that data specifically for Columbus, but I can track it down and get it to you at a later date. We've done similar comparisons in other cities that have had this requirement at some point in time, and we've found up to 10% of drivers who are either licensed by the city or by a taxi company that had the fingerprint background check that then went and did our check were denied through our process.
And what is your check? Can you talk about your check?
Sure. So we use a third-party accredited background check company. There's two that we use. They're well-known across the country, Accurate and Checker. Those companies get the background, get information from each driver. They do a social security trace to identify addresses that that driver has lived at throughout the past time period. They then do a scan of national databases, state databases, and county databases for any crimes. If there's a hit in any of those databases, they go directly to the courthouse or where those records are kept.
So if something's hit in Idaho, someone goes to Idaho and looks at the court records in Idaho?
They would go to the courthouse, yep. They would either send someone there, or they would look directly at the records. The importance of that is that we want to make sure that we're following through on that hit, whether it was an arrest that was then denied, if they weren't actually convicted, it was just an arrest, and we want to make sure that that driver has the opportunity...
And you do this for the thousands of drivers that you have on your system? And how many years do y'all go back and look?
We check back seven years.
Seven years. Is that something that the city could require to be a longer look-back period? I know, we can require whatever we want, but I'm just curious what Uber's stance would be on that.
Typically, we try to follow what the state policies are regarding look-back periods, but I think we've been cooperative based on jurisdiction. James Andre here from Uber Locally, nice to see you. I want to make one quick comment to your background check question. Initially, when the code passed about a year ago, there was a bunch of drivers who had been driving on the platform prior to the code being in place, so we had the opportunity at that point to have a subset of drivers that then had to go get a city background check, and there was a bunch that were discovered in that process that we had failed through our process, ranging from excessive speeding to drug use to OVIs. I think there were six or seven cases. So unfortunately, since then, what's difficult is the process now typically is an applicant who is applying on our website, which will trigger our background check process to begin, and they're making sure they go through that prior to going to the city. So we just don't have the opportunity to say at this point, you know, who has a city passed that, you know, we would then potentially fail, because the way it flows just doesn't work as well. So we only have that initial data from that subset of drivers, if that makes sense.
Is the current flow to apply through Uber, go through Uber, and then go to the city?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, our process... I mean, our process has been streamlined. I think that's the whole point, is that we've got it pretty tight via the website and all the checks and controls. We have that pretty quick turnaround in that. It's obviously a rigorous check, but, you know, with very reputable companies that can pull this off. Whereas then they go to the city through all these different stops, and ultimately, last step is to get that background check, which can take, you know, can be very quick and also be very, very long, which makes people wait to get onto the platform significantly in time. These are folks who, looking for an income opportunity, may not only want to use this platform between jobs or something in the coming weeks, and they're sort of getting denied that opportunity because of, you know, the time it takes to do that, so...
Are either of you able to speak on the state legislation if I ask some general questions?
I'm familiar with the proposal.
So what does the state regulation require when it comes to the background check requirement?
The state requires a very similar requirements in which we are already doing regarding look-back period. And all, it spells out all the criminal convictions that would preclude someone from actually driving on the platform, everything from the UI and alcohol-related to violence to MVR, amount of tickets you have, anything related to the vehicle. So in that bill is a long sort of list that says, "Here's what you can have." And so, you know, we, much like we have in Columbus, comply with what those requirements are.
But is the method of identifying those convictions fingerprint or the way that you're describing?
It is not. It's not required to be a fingerprint check.
So the state's not requiring a fingerprint?
That's correct.
And oh, okay.
That's correct.
All right.
And this is the same process that most jurisdictions in the U.S. are using.
And what about the sales tax issue? What's going on with Uber and the sales tax issue?
So, you know, sales tax issue, when we've worked with the Ohio Department of Taxation, so they're aware of our business model, how it works. We remit all our, you know, local taxes, payroll taxes, employee taxes. When it comes to the drivers on the platform, they're responsible for all state and local taxes. We generate a 1099 at the end of the year if they've made over a certain income, and then they self-report based on that. So they'll be required to, you know, pay particular taxes that will apply to them.
So Uber's position is that the driver is responsible for the sales tax remission?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Yep, like any independent contractor would do.
Through the 1099?
Through the 1099. It's not a line item on our receipt.
Okay. All right. I don't think I have any more questions, but I know where you're sitting. So if you pop back up, I'll ask you to come back up.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Representative from the Independent Taxi Cab Association of Columbus, Mr. Tayshu? Yes, sir. Welcome to council.
Thank you, Chairman Zach Klein. My name is Taffarata Yacho. I'm the owner representative for the Independent Taxi Association of Columbus. Please allow with the other owner they are here today. Today, I would like to give the owner possession on this issue of opening or increasing the taxi cab license to the drivers. Number one, based on the current situation in the taxi cab business, it is declined from day to day. There is no need to open up or increase the number of license. Number two, there is an adequate number of taxi on the street to serve the public. Beside more than 1,700 Uber X, there are Uber Black, Car2Go, livery, limousine, contract cars, and unlicensed gypsy cars that are on the street in competition with this business. Last year, the city of Columbus added an additional story license as a handicap accessible that made it 530 taxi cabs. It is a nightmare to drive through high-street, especially Friday night and Saturday night. I am one of weekend-night operators. I avoid high-street of this crowding. Our aim is to serve the community in better way and safe. Our aim is to be fair and compete with vehicle that the same rule and regulation. Due to the economy, there is no need to increase the number of license. In the past, an ad hoc committee studied and brought to your attention that there was no need to increase or open the number of license. We have observed the daily downtown business, and some of the cabs struggle for hours to get one fare. And sometimes, there is no place to park their cab. Traditionally, the city of Columbus has done the study which has worked well in the past. It has worked well in the past. We would support such an initiative now. Based on the above reasons, we strongly oppose the idea of opening or adding to the number of cab license in the city of Columbus. I would like to thank you, Chairman Klein, and fellow councilperson for affording us the opportunity to share with you our concern.
So just, so I understand your testimony is based on the fact that you and the organization you represent are not interested in increasing the number of taxi cab licenses that are available in the city of Columbus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you for sharing that commentary. Thank you. Some person that's not on the agenda, I see him in the back, and I want to give him equal opportunity, is Michael Goldsberry. Sir, do you want to come up? He's with Acme, and I know he filled out a speaker slip. I appreciate you doing that. I want to afford you the opportunity to speak as long as you wish, just like the other speakers had the opportunity to do so. I apologize for the oversight, but hopefully rectify it now with giving you the opportunity to speak.
More than fine, Mr. Klein. Okay. The issues at hand here, if you remember, we had it six months ago or so that we had a meeting here and that we were going to try out some of the regulations that they were trying to adhere to for Uber or apps like that. And we were going to say, we said, "We're going to see what happens after six months." Okay? In that time, Uber is in legislation with county, federal, civil, any kind of court you can imagine, overseas. They had a riot in Paris with the cab drivers that were there over Uber. So I think it's well-known that there's a lot of problems with Uber, so that's not where I want to focus my attention. If they're going to be identifiable, though, and they're going to be as a livery, they should have livery plates. That's a city law. Or that's a state law. Uber's standing, starting illegal until they force themselves into compliance. In other words, they're operating illegal until they can work toward compliance as they get caught. And these fine people here, they work really hard to try to get the legislation equal for the taxi cabs and Uber. We spend a lot of money every year, for 30 years now I have, to make sure that all of our taxis are compliant, legal, every single regulation is adhered to. Drivers' checks, we are waiting up to 30 days for them. Sometimes it costs us the idea of having a driver because they can't wait 30 days for a job. I'm wondering how Uber gets theirs done so much quicker. And I find it hard to believe that they would be able to comply with all the laws and regulations in all the municipalities. And if they could, why is there over 100 cases that are open against them on all kinds of different levels, including wrongful death? Okay? 147 cases currently earlier, but it's much more now. Okay? They're held to a different standard. They don't have to have a medallion sticker on their window or anything like that. They could be anybody that has a car, and on a Friday and Saturday night, football night, I guarantee you, anybody that has a car and they see people that are trying to fly a cab, miss the cab, they'll pull up and say, "I give you a ride. I'm an Uber." How can they identify themselves as otherwise? And there's a lot of cash deals that are made. That's a big deal. Ramona will tell you. Over the years, cash deals designate a taxi cab with a meter. These cars are operating without a meter. They're operating with a scale that goes up as the supply and demand goes up. How can you do that and play on the same playing field with a taxi cab company? And this is worldwide. I could give you examples every single day. I gave Wesley Phillips information every single day. There were reports worldwide about how taxi cab companies are being destroyed by Uber because they don't have to say, they don't have to be on the same playing field. They don't have to hold themselves to the same regulations. It's expensive to hold yourself to regulations. We got to pay to get our cars inspected. We have to take them off the street. We have to do everything just right in order to keep our cars on the street, legal, with drivers in them. You know, the city tried to come to a compromise with them about six months ago and tried to get some regulations to them to work with, and Uber completely disregarded them. And what agreements they did make, they are not following through on. And that bears to the law. And it also bears to the fact that we don't have the money in this city to dedicate the law enforcement that is necessary to keep Uber in compliance. But the biggest problem I've had through the very whole process is this. A driver for Uber has his own insurance on his own car. Uber claims they have insurance on that car as well or that driver. There are many cases across the United States where State Farm and GEICO and all these different insurance companies are failing to pay for an accident because the driver was using the vehicle as a livery. And then Uber is not covering that either because they feel that the driver's insurance should cover it. On a national level, that is a big concern, especially since there's been a couple deaths and especially since there's a widespread lack, lack thereof, of following the laws, especially in the insurance laws. So that's a big, big, huge thing that's always going to go down until Uber can follow the same regulations that we do. Entertaining questions you may have.
I appreciate your testimony and your perspective. Thank you for sharing it. I do want to give Uber the opportunity, if they want, to talk about the insurance issues that Mr. Goldsberry raised, if they want to do that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So on the insurance piece, it's actually a really interesting example of how other industries have been able to innovate based on the ride-sharing industry. Earlier this year, ride-sharing companies, Uber and Lyft, insurance companies, national insurance companies, and insurance trade associations came to a national agreement on what insurance should look like for this industry. That includes, you know, some new products that differentiate when a driver is providing commercial activity and when they're not. Through the app and through our technology, that can all be tracked. So there's never a period in time when a driver's not covered. If the app is off, the driver's going to have their personal insurance. If the app is on, they're going to be covered by a TNC-specific product, whether that's a product the driver buys or whether that's a product that's offered by Uber or by Lyft. So, you know, we provide $1 million during commercial activity. When the app is on and there's not commercial activity, we provide what's kind of set by state standards. So there's never a time period where the driver's not covered, and it's, you know, the policies that are in place are supported by the insurance industry.
You mentioned the driver could buy. What can the driver buy?
So in some states, you've seen these insurance companies develop TNC-specific plans. So this could be a rider that's on their personal plan that's designed for that period of time when the app is on.
By rider, you mean an insurance rider, not a passenger in the car?
Yes, yes, yes. So it could be, you know, $5 or $10 a month that would be added on to their own personal insurance plan that would cover that time period.
Does Uber, well, first of all, does Ohio have such an option? Do you know of insurance companies in Ohio?
I don't believe it does. But some of the states that passed insurance requirements earlier this year, they've been test markets for the insurance companies for those products.
And what is, going back to the state legislation, if you know the answer, what does the state legislation require in terms of insurance?
So exactly what I just described, and that's what's supported by the insurance industry as well as the ride-sharing industry.
Here in Ohio?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming back up. We are now going to move to the speaker slip portion. Before I do so, City Attorney Pfeifer, you want to add any commentary? City Attorney? No? Okay. If you haven't had a chance to fill out a speaker slip, you can do so and give it to Gina. Raise your hand, Gina. Give it to her. The first speaker is Cassandra Deala. Well, you had it phonetically pronounced, spelled out for me, so... If you just could identify yourself, state your address, any organizations that you represent, you'll have three minutes.
Cassandra Deala. I live in Westerville. Do you want the full address?
Sure.
5508 Buenos Aires Boulevard in Westerville, Ohio. I am a driver with Uber. I am not affiliated, other than that, with any organizations. Sorry, I bring up my notes here. I wasn't expecting to be the first one. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm here as a peer-to-peer driver. I represent myself. I'm not going to say that I speak for anyone else. Pardon my nervousness today. When I testified last year, I received a criminal offense a week after I testified, so I'm a little nervous about that. I was also the only driver that I know of that was sued by the city as part of Lyft's lawsuit. So I have kind of a more intimate knowledge of some of the things going on here in the A little background, I was a founding driver with Lyft. I wore several hats for Lyft. I was a mentor and an advocate and did a number of things. I also drove for a limo company before that. I became an Uber driver when they offered a nice peachy deal to Lyft drivers to take one ride for $500. And then since Lyft has left town, of course, I've been driving for Uber pretty much full-time. I, when Lyft was still here, I drove for both companies, but driving now for full-time with Uber. Over the last 18 months, I have seen the peer-to-peer market grow here in Columbus. In the beginning, it was mostly college students, and that was who were our passengers, and it was a very tight pickup area. And since then, and over the summer, then a lot of our business dropped off because the students left town to go home for the summer break. But then this summer, I noticed a huge difference because now we're picking up their parents and even their grandparents are using the Uber services. So the kids are, the young people are telling their parents and grandparents about it, and we are growing in that clientele. Many, also Uber is making a big effort in reaching our business-class customers as well. So there is a lot of business passengers that we receive on a day-to-day basis. In fact, I had a passenger tell me that a lot of the businesses are opting for Uber over rental cars because of it limits their liability if their employees are not the ones driving. That was just something from a passenger. I don't have any other information to share on that. I drive mostly full-time with Uber, and I also have a business that I work from home. During the week, I work early mornings for the commuters and then sometimes go back out for the evening commute, depending on what else I have going on. On the weekends, I tend to work dinner through early morning and work that bar crowd. I have seen, I have had a lot of passengers tell me that they would use us, and I've seen... seen that over a cab. For some reason, there's something about the personal nature of the Uber, of being our personal cars and the personal nature of it. (beep) Okay, that people feel more comfortable, I didn't realize there was a time factor on that, that people feel more comfortable about that. Let me just share, I can address a little bit of the insurance real quick because I've researched it, and I know that there are hybrid policies in other states. They're not here yet in Ohio. For me to get a commercial policy, it'd be $10,000 to $11,000 a year, very much out of my budget. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Duffy. Mr. Duffy, thanks for coming down to counsel.
Right here to your right. Councilman Klein, thank you for the opportunity. And again, as I did about a year ago, last time I testified on this issue, I applaud you for conducting further today's hearing on this matter. I have used, of course, many services. I am, first of all, let me start over here. I am president of the National Federation of the Blind of Ohio. My address is 73 Georgetown Drive, Columbus 43214. So, transportation, there are a lot of needs in the disabled community, and people are sort of looking at various services and vying for various dollars that are out there. But one thing that we all agree on is a real barrier to us in terms of living forward and rich lives is transportation. In the blindness community, 70% to 80% of blind people are unemployed. One of the major factors in that statistic, again, is transportation. So I've used a variety of transportation systems over the years, taxis, buses, trains, planes, Uber and Lyft. And I can tell you that the last time I used a taxi was in Washington, DC, in April, because it was very convenient to my location. I use Uber or Lyft in whatever city I'm in, as long as that service is available, because it is extremely convenient for me. I can use the phone on my app. I can feel safe in the ride that I'm taking. This morning, I had a meeting in Whitehall, and I said we would be there by 9:30. We got there at 9:29. I've never been able to do that with a taxi. Are there problems with Uber and peer-to-peer transportation services? Absolutely. I've experienced some of those in Columbus this summer. I had a friend move to the city who uses a guide dog, and invariably for a while, she or we were denied trips by Uber drivers, not by Uber itself, but a driver would pull up and realize that she had a dog and pull away. We reported this to Uber on a consistent basis. What I will say is, we have gotten very responsive and appropriate support through the Uber system. Does it work exactly how I'd like it to? No, but not much in life does. I have said, you know, the response we typically get is, okay, we know this shouldn't happen. We're investigating. I would like to know what happens as a result of those investigations sometimes. What action was taken so that this kind of things don't continue to happen with the same drivers? We conducted a camp for blind children this summer. We brought college students in to help with the camp. Some of those students were guide dog users.
(beep). If you just could finish briefly.
Sure. So, we had one driver say, "This is my car. I should be able to do what I want with it." And I said, "It's great. You can, as long as you're not driving for Uber. But when you are, you have to obey Uber policy and law." And they both say you have to take the guide dog. So, you know, this has been a problem, but I will say Uber's been quite responsive, and it is not a problem unique to Uber because we've had the same issues with taxis. We had one taxi driver tell one of our members that they could put the dog in the trunk, otherwise they weren't gonna take it. So, you know, all of these issues are common to a variety of transportation companies.
Mr. Duffy, did you report any of those issues to governmental authorities? Like whether it's local, state, or federal jurisdictions?
I did not. I've actually emailed with Gina a little bit this summer and said I was gonna get more information about that together, and then I saw that this hearing was coming, so I thought I would address it here today.
If it's okay with Uber, I'd like for them maybe to talk to Mr. Duffy about some of the questions that he raised offline. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Our next speaker is Iba Diallo. Welcome to counsel.
Yes, thank you.
If you could identify any organizations you're related with.
Yeah, my name is Iba Diallo, and I'm representing an organization. I'm representing the organization called CDS, Cup Driver Services. I'm a driver, and we are here to assist the cup drivers and their families. I'm gonna speak on a non-agenda subject. I know this was called for the peer-to-peer, but so far, the one owner representative come and speak about the subject I'm interested. Right now, I think I am, as a driver, I'm very well placed to talk, to give my opinion, to give a light to other people who are neither drivers nor companies. And at the first time, I was saying, talking about Uber and the taxi companies, I was saying that it's like coming out of a frying pan and falling into a fire. Because none of them, these two companies, are good for the drivers. Drivers been here for 20 years. They've been, they are the ones suffering from this system. We have families going through a lot of things, still here paying money to these cup companies. And if you see today that Uber is successful here, it's because of these frustrated drivers moving from the taxi-driving business to Uber. Most of the drivers from Uber, they think that Uber is a relief. One driver even tell me, "Hey, did you ever listen to the Bob Marley song?" I say, "Which one?" He say, "God, Jah come to break down oppression, rule equality, and set the captive free." He say it's just like Uber. He went to Uber. He say it's like Jah come to break down oppression, rule opportunity, and set the driver free. That's how we look at it. Today, like I said, speaking on a non-agenda topic, I will encourage the city of Columbus to open these numbers, just like the other cities, Cincinnati, everywhere, the numbers are open, and give an opportunity to these hard-working people. We are on the street almost 12 hours, 14 hours, whether it rains or not, you gotta be outside because you have to pay the lease to these cup companies, to these independent drivers. It's very hard. We don't wanna be public charge. We wanna work hard and participate and contribute to the development of this country. That's why we are asking the city council to open these numbers, even if they cannot open them all, deregulate, at least do something for these hard-working drivers. Thank you.
Sir, so I understand what you're advocating for. If I understand you correctly, you are a driver.
Yes.
Do you own your own car?
I don't own.
You don't own your own car?
Yeah.
So you're advocating that we have unlimited taxis? Is that what you're, I'm just trying to understand exactly what your position is.
No.
When you say, "Open it up," open up what?
Yeah, open the, increase the taxi licenses.
Okay, so increase the number of taxi licenses?
The number of taxi licenses.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is Dennis Roberts. Welcome to counsel. Who day? All right. I'm a Bengals fan, too.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. They did pretty good last night.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm kinda speaking off-script, too, and it's basically, I'm echoing the...
If you could identify yourself and any organizations.
I'm sorry. My name's Dennis Roberts. I've been driving a taxi here in this city for about 25 years. And I also like to echo pretty much what the last gentleman just was talking about. We, I'm not an owner of a cab. I just rent a taxi from a owner. I like to see the cab's license open up because we are paying, like Yellow Cab Company, they wanna charge us pretty close to $600, $700, $800 a week to drive a taxi. With Uber coming in, they're knocking down the business a lot. The cab companies have lowered their rates to rent a taxi for owners. There's tons of many owners that outnumber the, I mean, tons of drivers that outnumber the license that's available. So we're forced to drive a cab from someone that owns a license. I say, open the license to open them up. So myself, I can afford to feed my family. I won't be forced to pay astronomical amounts of money to the cab companies, and it's a conflict of interest for them, for them not to want to open the license up. A lot of licenses, if you wanna buy one, they cost $50,000, $75,000, like in a black-market type deal. Nobody can afford to buy one of those, so you become a slave to pay these cab companies what they ask for their taxi license, I mean, taxis to rent to drive. Kinda a little bit unprepared, a little nervous, but I wasn't expecting to speak. But however, there was the point that I like to make, in America's free enterprise, and I just think that everybody should have an opportunity in this business. And we don't. So by opening up the taxi licenses, giving it to the qualified drivers, I don't see no harm in it. Only harm could come from the taxi companies that own all the licenses and overcharge us. Of course, they don't want us to have licenses. So that was the point that I was trying to make, would like to make.
If I may ask, with the objections that you raised, why wouldn't you drive for, like, an Uber?
Well, I didn't say I would drive for an Uber.
I know, but I'm just curious. Like, why, you know, you have, I think you raised legitimate objections, so I'm just curious. You don't have to answer me, I'm putting you on the spot.
Well, Uber don't have a lease that you have to pay to drive. As long as you own your car and you qualify, you can go out there and you can start earning money. With renting a taxi from the company, you have to go out there and half your day or three-quarters of your day, all that money you earn goes to the cab company. And it just seems unfair for me that I cannot buy a license because the city has them closed. So, I hope I answered your question. I'd just like to be a little bit more independent, a little bit more in control. You know, if I'm not paying $2,000 or $3,000 a month to drive a cab, most of that money goes in my pocket and paying my insurance.
So I guess just my curiosity is, what's your barrier to not driving for Uber? Is it the lack of having a personal car to drive around, or just lack of interest?
Oh, no.
Since you raised the point, I'm just curious what the response is.
My response to not, to driving for Uber, I don't drive for Uber. I drive a taxi. I rent a taxi. And who knows? I cannot speak on the future. If you open up the taxis, we will be sorta like on even playing ground with Uber and the cab companies.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I appreciate you sharing your story.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Shweib Abukar. Apologies if I mispronounced your name, sir. Welcome to counsel.
Hello, Councilman. My name is Shweib Abukar. I live 2259 Munir Avenue. I'm a cab driver. I'm also owner. I'm here to talk about the cab industry's nightmare that was Uber when you come to the city, which is, the gentleman that was ahead of me when I come in, he was talking about, he actually pointed out all the, there's an unfair regulation. We as taxi cab drivers, we are regulated, which Uber is not regulated. For instance, I work outside, and also I work in the airport. When I have to go to airport, I have to go to the airport lot and have to queue. I have to wait my line to go to the airport, which is gate. And it's still, at the same time, going in line again. But now, we have Uber drivers, which is our UberX. They're just coming in, which is they causing, they're making a lot of traffic to get into the airport, the arrival. You can't even, when we leaving our lots, going to the airport, we can't even get into the, you know, to the gate, which is where we line up because of them, because they're blocking the road. We have to get a ticket, and when we load to the customer, we have to give the ticket to the starter. And UberX, they don't doing that. They just come in and load and go, which is unfair to us. And a lot of customers coming from other states, which they've been using Uber, when they come in, they don't just still look for the taxi, they just order Uber, which is like, we're losing a lot of business in the airport right now. We're sitting there like six, eight hours, and we get a fare going to Bexley, which will be like $12, $13. So I see it that way unfair, you know, to the cab drivers. On the other hand, we as cab industry, this week, I picked up a gentleman, his name, accidentally, I met him, is Eric, which happened to be the man that he lost his wife through the Uber driver. I picked him up, I took him to, he was going to Sam's Club and get his stuff, wait in him, load it, and bring him back. And I asked him, he told me, I didn't even knew when he told me that, what happened, and he told me that Uber charges less. That's why he was taking before Uber. But now, he feels safe taking the taxi cab, even though if he have to pay extra. I told him, we offer discounts. We give 20% discounts if you ask us round trip or any trip that you wanted. And our drivers, they're safe. They know the routes, they know the streets. They are professional drivers, they've been on the street for a long time. And that make me really, you know, realize that a lot of people look only for (beep) for the price, you know, not for just the safety and other stuff. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments, sir. The final speaker that I have, so if you fill out a speaker slip, and I only have one left, be sure you see Gina, is Asval Baleti. Welcome to counsel, sir. Good to see you again.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for the opportunity. Just want to add up, my name is Asval G. Baleti. I'm the owner of Bobcat Taxi, and I'm also a member of the Taxi Cap Association, Independent Taxi Cap Association. Just wanted to share this, is about the taxi cab. I've been over 25 years on this taxi cab business. In the last year and a half, I learned a lot, losing the taxi cab industry, the business. So many different new companies coming up, like Hoover, taking over our business. And we have a hard time right now getting at least drivers to take over my cab, being parked, you know, driver. Just to let you know that also, Mr. Chairman, there is about 150 independent taxi cap association, independent taxi cap, don't got no business, sit at the airport to get a three or four trip a day, because there is no way... a three or four trip a day, because there is no way to go get a trip. There's no business nowhere. I wanted to take that attention on you, so there is no need to add up a new number of taxi cabs to the city. We are already losing. We about to turn it in those licenses. But everybody tried to own a cab license, everybody. But I just let you know that owning a taxi cab is not easy. There is unfair regulation is going through the city of Columbus, like Hoover. They not inspected like we do. They ain't got no meter inspection on them. There is no mechanical inspection on them. This is unfair, what's going on here in the city, after 25 years been in, 25 years been in business, and now is just uncontrolled. There is, you know, unlaced vehicles on the road. We didn't got no park to do, to get a trip. I just to put this on on the attention. We don't got no business, we don't need no more license on the road. We are already losing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you could refrain from applause, just to, just to make a correction, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Pats, but there is a mechanical inspection for Uber drivers, right? The speaker mentioned that there's a fare, which clearly Uber doesn't have, or peer-to-peer company doesn't have, but there is a mechanical inspection that is required per the Columbus City Code.
Yes.
Okay. By a mechanical certified, is it ACS?
ASC certified mechanic.
Certified mechanic, that's required. So I just wanted to clarify the record. Okay, so someone didn't fill out a speaker slip, it's your last call, so this is the last speaker. Pierre Sainte-Tille Franch Cilion? Or, sorry, sir. If you could state the name that I apologize for not saying correctly.
Well, my name is Pierre Sainte-Tille Franchignon. I live in Columbus, Ohio, 2625, Gateway Wood. And also, I am a taxi driver. Let me go back, beginning my experience with taxi, that is back 1995, and it wasn't work for me very well because I have a family. And go to job, back 2007, I lose my job, and I go back again to a taxi business again. But like I heard multiple people talking about the business is not good, they go sit down at the airport waiting for fare. And my experience, when I was driving taxi, I never, ever go to airport, wait for fare. The advantage to go to airport, maybe you can get a good fare. The disadvantage, you can wait there for two, three, four hours. You got somebody, come from airport, where they going, probably be right there at Broad Street. That fare cost you about maybe $6 or $8, it's not worth it. If you're driving, you go around, you will pick up a good fare. And also, when I left the taxi company, I am driving what now for Uber. And I'm happy where I am what now, and I don't have any problem to become a Uber partner. I have any problem to become a Uber partner. I feel safe, because when I was driving taxi, multiple time, people request taxi, sometime you got flag on the street, when you pick up that customer, you always put behind your head, did that person go and pay you or not? Because you don't know, no information show up. When you get to final destination, what they do, they said, we go here, stop. Soon you hit the brakes, all you hear is the door is open, they run. That mean you lose your fare, you lose your time, you lose your gas. That person take money away from your family. Driving for Uber, a very good experience, very good system, very convenient. My job is go pick up a customer, drop him off. My head is clear, I know I'm going to get paid. So my last thing is, I hear they said Uber not comply with the city. For me, myself, when I was employed for Uber, I do first background check. When it coming clear, they send me through the city, then I got the number one done to the city. So I got two background check. The city asked me to get my car, to get inspected by a certified mechanic before I can start driving for Uber. So I'm happy, and thank you for letting me speak.
There's been some talk about airport, and I just want to clarify, if I recall, and again, Ms. Pats, feel free to jump in if I'm incorrect here, but when we talked about regulating Uber and the peer-to-peer companies a couple months ago, a year ago, airport was somewhat out of our jurisdiction because they regulate their own pickup and drop-off. So I know there's a lot of talk about airport, but in a lot of ways, the city doesn't regulate airport pickup and drop-off. Is that correct?
Correct. Their own, they are their own political subdivision, and they have their own licensing and rules.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay, again, last speaker slip, last chance to just fill something out. In this handwriting, I apologize, I maybe begins with an S. So whoever just filled this one out, come on up. If you could state your name for the record, any organizations that you represent.
My name is Semplis Mudenge. I live 3852 Longton Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 43221. And I'm here as a driver, taxi driver, I'm not an owner. And my, I was not planning to say, you know, to speak today, but what I heard made me want to express myself about this issue. I'm a taxi driver, and I rent a cab, I have to pay $200 a week, which will be like $800 a month. And as everybody said, we are, we all understand and we agree on one thing, the business are going down. It's not the same used to be. Now, if I work and have $200 a week and keep those, $200 a week, like for a month, I'm going to have $800 if I had my taxi, if I had my number. And also, I have a question in my mind, why people can fight so hard for somebody to have a number, to be independent? This country has a kind of free spirit of making money, raising your family. I have five children, and if I had like $800 kept in my bank account, I think I would be better off than paying somebody. And I don't have anything against the owners, but I'm just trying to find, to fight for my family. If I am doing the job, if I'm the one who is driving, if I'm the one who's risking the night, maybe I should be rewarded by getting something, which I know this country wants somebody to work hard and work for his family, and then depend on any government welfare or something. Now, I would like to know, why would somebody fight so hard for somebody to have something he has? It doesn't hurt, the number doesn't hurt them. Why do they think it's going to hurt us? If I am working hard and I'm doing the job the right way, and I am cautious for my client, and I assist people, like the one who say that they need like a handicap, or maybe any person, even an old person doesn't move so right, I can maybe help. If somebody is happy about my services, why other group of people will try to stop anybody to give us numbers when I've never seen anybody returning the numbers? They like them. We have to keep working for them. If I was maybe in their group, maybe I want to keep these drivers working for me, you know, don't go anywhere, work for me. A company which has a lot of employees, if they are losing employees, they would be mad too. You have to keep their employees working. They have to have the income from somebody who's working for them. If somebody was... Sorry. If somebody was closing the doors of an industry because people are just saying, okay, I'm quitting, I'm quitting, I'm quitting, they would do the same thing. But if somebody has like a free enterprise spirit, want to work for himself, needs a number, has a family, and doesn't even know how he's going to make, you know, and, you know, the week, he's going to maybe make this week about what he has to pay for schools, for everything, just for kids, then how, that's my main question right here, why somebody will tell somebody, don't give to that something that you gave me. You gave me a number, don't give to those. That's my question.
All right, well, I appreciate, thank you for giving your testimony. And as you could probably tell, there's folks that say that we should open the licenses, folks that say we shouldn't open the licenses, and I think that's, you know, part of, you know, Yellow Cab mentioned, we should do a study on licenses. So I think that's just a topic of conversation that we should continue to talk about. So I mean, I think there's people on all sides of the spectrum here. So the last speaker is Windrum, or Windrum Ayir. Thanks for coming down to council.
Yeah, my name is Wanda Mayella. I live 1185 Tannick Street, Black Lake, Ohio. I am a cab driver, independent taxi. I've been here in Columbus since 1993. Well, my answer is short answer, not to open license, because I always drive seven days a week, long hour, even I don't have enough time for my family, because I have to make money, to educate my kids to go to better school. So what it is, I don't want to go to welfare like I used to. My, all my parents in here, my uncles, all of them, they used to live in Greenbrier, which is there was under welfare, under government help, but the working driver, cab driver, they send all their kids to better school, they work hard, college, or most of them, they finish, they start working. So what it is, if there is open license, it's going to make me go back to the welfare. I don't want to go welfare. I have, I live nice area, I bought a house, I have good family, even though I don't spend time with them. But the way I work now, I like it. I don't want it to open license. First of all, when I came from Africa, I didn't came here to drive taxi. I came here for better life, for opportunity, for education. Well, as far I seen it, maybe this is easy for me, I start driving taxi. So 10 people, they open a store, so they own a store. I have to own, I cannot say I have to own this store. Most people, they open business, I cannot be like them to open business. So these people, they want to be owner license. There is no way. Everybody cannot be owner. You like it? You work. You don't like it? There are so many warehouse, there are so many work everywhere, you can work. So this is only my answer I have, not to open license.
So you are a driver, but you do not own a?
I own, now I own a...
Now you own?
Yes.
You own a, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so you're an owner and you're a driver?
Driver.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, that's our last speaker. I appreciate everyone's attention and diligence to this issue. I think we saw a wide variety of opinions on especially the license issue, the latter part of the hearing, and we got some good background information. Thank you, Ms. Pats, for the information that you provided, as far as, and of course, the city attorney's office who had to leave, but just the background information and how it relates to regulating at the state level, how that affects us, what the state's doing, what our current status of the law is, and then of course, the peer-to-peer perspective. Appreciate Uber staying, sticking around as well. You know, take a lot of this under advisement and do some reading on the current status of what's going on locally, as well as at the state level. I want to keep a very keen eye on what's going on at the state level and how that affects us. But appreciate everyone's ability to come and speak and share the commentary with me, and of course, everyone who filled out speaker slips of sharing their opinion. So that concludes the hearing. Everyone have a great night and look forward to the next hearing. Thank you.